All right, good morning, everyone. Let's call to order this Board of Franklin County Commissioners meeting for February 3rd.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
President.
Commissioner Harris?
President.
Chair Waymire?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
All right, our Pledge of Allegiance. That Pledge of Allegiance to the flag?
To the flag.
United States.
United States of America and the other republic which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, liberty and justice pro. All right, our invocation today is led by Reverend Bob Colrick of the First Christian Church in Ottawa.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Bob Colrick. I am the interim pastor at the First Christian Church here in town. It is my honor and privilege to pray at this meeting at Franklin County Board of County Commissioners. Will you bow your head in prayer, please? God of all creation, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are worthy of praise, God, and we thank you for this opportunity. Consider the needs and wishes and desires of those who live in our county. You, God, are the fountain of all that is good. You are the source of all our many blessings. Thank you for every gift that you have bestowed on ourselves and all those we serve. We thank you that we can meet freely. We ask, God, that you would guide and direct our deliberations and discussions and perhaps debates. We pray that our time and efforts might be productive, that our thoughts and words be full of wisdom, and that our conversations be conducted in the spirit of unity, compassion, and fair-mindedness. We ask that your presence might rest on each and every person here and that your knowledge and insight might permeate this room. Thank you, God, for the trust of the people we serve, for the privilege of doing our best to accomplish our work and our goals this day. Word is in your name we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
All right, correspondence and organizational business. Anything to report, Derek?
No, sir.
All right, do we have any public comment, Janet?
No, sir.
All right, our consent agenda this week consists of meeting minutes from January 27th. Claim vouchers in the amount of $887,859.33, payroll in the amount of $1,308,731.99. I believe that's it. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
This is Don. I'll make a motion.
Mr. Dunn, second.
Commissioner Stottlemyre, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, our first item of business is to consider awarding various tire bids. Those are listed there in the attached document. David Lee, Public Works Director.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is a, uh, this item and the next item are both, um, uh, items that we bring before you probably a couple of times a year. Uh, so what we need to do, what we would like to do is replenish our stock of tires. Uh, we sent out, um, uh, bids to, um, multiple companies. Um, and we are recommending that, uh, approval to take, um, tire bids one, two, and three from Pomp's Tire across Midwest. Uh, tire bid, bids, uh, four and five from D and D Tires and tire bid six from Kansas Land Tire. Uh, those respective companies had the lowest and best bid for, uh, the respective, uh, uh, groups of, uh, tires that we had. So we would look for approval to do so.
Right, is there a motion to award the tire bids as stated?
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll make that motion.
Uh, Commissioner Dunn, second.
Commissioner Harris, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, our second item, uh, pertains to purchasing culverts. David?
Yes, Commissioners, uh, this is another item that, uh, we bring before you a couple of times a year. Um, last year we used, um, oh, between, uh, crossroad tubes and entrances, uh, we used over a hundred, uh, culverts and we need to, our, our supply is, uh, very low right at the moment and we need to replenish that. Uh, we sent the bids to, uh, three different vendors, uh, and Wellburn Sales, uh, came in lowest across the board. Uh, and we are recommending that, uh, that we award the bid to Wellburn Sales in the amount of $72,270.10.
All right, is there a motion to award the, uh, culvert bid to Wellburn Sales?
Uh, Chair Meyer, that's, uh, Commissioner Dunn. Just one question for David. Uh, uh, what's the trend on the prices? Are they, are they trending up? Uh, I was gonna ask that on the tires too, uh, what's going on with them?
Yeah, I have not done that analysis, uh, i- but with all the other commodities, the, the trend is, uh, for these prices to increase a little bit each year. And I would assume that that's the same case here. I'll be happy to, uh, take a closer look at that and let you know, uh, at next week's meeting if that would be okay.
Yes, that'd be fine. Just curious about it. Thanks. I'll make the motion to accept.
All right.
Commissioner Dickinson, I'll second.
Commissioner Dickinson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes, and our third item of business is to receive an EMS report for 2020.
Morning, Commissioner. This is Nick.
Morning, Nick.
I, uh, am happy we talked to you about something other than COVID for a little bit this morning. So, uh, as Commissioner Stottlemyre brought up, we really didn't get a lot of EMS reports last year due to COVID and what was going on. So I put together a detailed report, um, talking about kind of what happened throughout the year, uh, specifically looking at call volume and the, uh, the revenues. So as we roll through the PowerPoint that I've kind of put together for you, on page two, uh, i- i- it's a typical EMS report that you guys are, are used to seeing and, uh, basically it rolls through, if we look at January and the call volume, how many calls we average per day and then the calls per year. Uh, and then it compares it to 2019 and I see that 2018 is still on a couple of, but that's 2019. So like January, we were 56 calls behind. It goes on down, looking at private pay, and then it gets into our total deposits and breaks that out by EMS deposits and education deposits. Due to the difference of, uh, our EMS deposits are going to be revenues made on transporting patients. The EMS is going to be the outreach programs, for example, our, uh, classes we teach for Overland Park Regional, uh, Latham Medical Center, Lawrence Surgery Center, um, and, and local CPR classes. It also entails, uh, first responder, or EMR classes, which is the former first responder class, EMT and advanced EMT classes. So, uh, and then you look, our budget per month, we need to bring in $82,000, uh, per month for us to, uh, to meet, uh, our budget that we set for our portion. Uh, so you can see down there that we were just $580 over that in January. It goes on down to the 2020 adjustments where you see our Medicare, Medicaid adjustments, insurance adjustments, uh, deceased without estate, all of those adjustments is uncollectible debt or contractual, uh, adjustments for insurance companies. And then we get to the bottom and you can see what our total revenue is. Um, our total adjustment for let's say January was $54,633.03. We did send $2,938.97 to collections. We didn't have sent anything to Midwest and our charges for the month of January were $171,893. And, and that's a quick run-through. We'll jump to page three. Cause page three at the end there is the total, so it really shows us what our call volume was and what our revenues and, and everything were for the year. So we, we did have 3,613 calls. We averaged for the year 9.87 calls a year or a month, a day. And, uh, then you look down there where it says a difference, we were 213 calls shy of where we were at in, in 2019 and a lot of that's because of COVID and we'll get into that in a minute. But we, uh, get down to our total deposits for the year and that was $1,225,865.90. $12,673 of that was generated from education. And our budget that we have to, uh, meet was $985,000. So we came in, uh, $240,865.99 over what we, uh, had anticipated that we would make. So even in COVID, uh, the call volume picked up and changing some billing practices, we had a very good financial year. As you look down, you can see that our total write-offs or adjustments for, for the year was $719,748.9. If we jump to page four, page four gives us a good synopsis in a bigger print of the, the total of everything. So on the bottom right corner there, you can see our total revenues, you can see our total adjustments. And with, uh, with this whole report, the, the things that the commission, uh, need to approve is the adjustments for the year and that's the $719,748.9. And the more money you make, the more your adjustments are because with your Medicaid, your, your Medicare's, uh, we have large adjustments. We did, uh, send $266,878.2 to the state collections and we, uh, did send $116,230.24 to Midwest collections. And those are the three numbers that we will need the approval on when the report's done. The total charges for the year was just almost $2 million, $1,000, $1,979.8798. Before we get into the rest of the report, are there any questions on the revenues? Okay, um, so if we go to page five, what I'm gonna kind of go over with, with, with you guys are the, uh, the Franklin County EMS numbers today. I'll get to the communications number later this month. So on page six, you can look at our call volume and we break that out per month from 2013 to 2020. And you can see that in April, um, we had a significant drop from 2019. We only had 2, 219 calls in April where 2019, we had 324. That was right in the midst of COVID when people weren't calling an ambulance, people weren't going to the ER. You can see we were kind of low in May and June, but then in July, you can see we picked right back up and, and powered back into a lot of calls. But if you look at the chart there on the bottom, the, the 2004 to 2020, you can see our trend line. And we did have a, a significant drop of, you know, just over 200 calls for 2020. The next page, which is page seven, is the fire district totals. This is a, a breakout of each one of the fire districts and kind of where our high call volume is. One thing that I will tell you is, is the South Ottawa does incorporate transfers from Advent Health. So, um, some of those numbers are going to be transfers, but 30% of our calls still come from the south side of Ottawa, which is Seventh Street South. And, and then we go to the north side of Ottawa. Actually Advent's in there, we have an RMH. So that is 100% of the, uh, call volume for South Ottawa. We did 603 transports out of Advent, uh, Northwest Fire, uh, number two, which would be the Centropolis area, we were 21 transports and so on. You can see Franklin, which is Wellsville, we did 339 calls in that area. So that was our fourth, Wellsville's still our fourth high call area and then it goes to the Pomona area for fifth high call volume. Uh, go to page eight. What we look at with page eight is trends to, uh, look at our, our call times and find out when our peak times are. And, and you can see going across there, we start to peak about eight o'clock in the morning and right around, uh, eight o'clock, nine o'clock, we start to see that trend where we're back, where we drop. But, uh, it's pretty steady between the hours of eight to eight. Page nine really breaks out and I changed that to 2019 or 2020. I don't know why it says 2019 on it. But, uh, you, uh, can see on there the hospitals and these are drop-off locations. This is where we transport to. So you can see the majority of our patients get transported to Advent Health. We have seen a significant increase since the merger with, with Advent, Shawnee Mission, uh, to, where 231 calls went there this year. But Alitha still is, is getting the second most amount of transports and that's 293. So a breakout there of our, the facilities we transport to and what it looks like. Uh, we did do some transports back to nursing facilities or residents. And you can see the majority of our transports, other things besides hospitals are actually going to be the, taking people home. And, and we continue to see an increase in that with hospice patients needing to be transported back to the residence, uh, for comfort care measures. So that's one thing we continue to work with. We didn't utilize helicopter services at all in 2020 and I believe we only used them one time in 2019. So, uh, we're still doing a good job getting our patients transported in a timely fashion to the places they need to go. And Advent, since they have got the, uh, level four trauma designation, have been able to take a larger portion of some of our trauma patients that we used to take up to the city. And, and they've done a good job in being able to stabilize them, patients to bring them here. So that has been a good, uh, addition to our community. Get over the refusals and standbys. 1,235 of our responses that we put into our system were either, uh, uh, some blood draws, deceased without transports, uh, CPR cards do get put in here when we do classes. But, uh, if you look, our total refusal rate, we did 791 refusals, which is 21%. National average still runs about 24%, so we're staying well under that. Our goal is to keep it at 20% and below, so we were slightly over that. The last page we have is page 10 and this is just a, uh, a quick overview of what our revenues look like. It, it, it looks at our collections and, and how we're billing. And, and I go all the way back to 2005 because I think it's important that we, we look at a good timeframe of what we've done. In 2005, our collection rates were about 66%. We weren't utilizing the state set off program and other, uh, collection agencies. So we, we, and we had different billing practices then. In 2007, we started utilizing the state set off program to collect debt and we, we've changed our, our billing practices and that's the time that pretty much I took over as chief is when we, we made these changes, uh, we started collecting 91%. And you can see as we roll through there, there were some years that we got into the eighties, but we've stayed strong with that. 2020, we had 90% of our collectible debt we collected. So I, I think that speaks volumes from 2018 and 2019 and the emphasis that we put on making sure we have good billing practices and making sure that we're working with patients and, and focusing on insurances. So that's, uh, just a, an overview of what our, our revenues look like. So with that being said, that's the end of the, the report I have. Is there any questions that I can answer?
Nick, this is Don.
Yes, sir.
Are you there, Nick?
Yes.
Could I get you, if you would please, take a copy of that report in my mailbox there at the annex?
I can do that. I have one laying here. I'll put in there for you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I guess the only other thing I'd say is I appreciate the, the ambulance. It seems to me that it hasn't dropped off an ounce, even though you got twice as much on your plate now. So I think that's a, uh, a good sign for you and a good sign for the people that work for you. So, uh, just want to thank you and that, that, that's the only question I'd have. No question, just a comment.
And, and just to highlight too, we did continue our, we, we, we strive to get our gold award for, uh, for, uh, STEMI care, which is a cardiac care that, i- i- it really highlights that how fast we get people having, um, heart attacks into a cath lab. And we met the standards and did receive the Gold Plus Award again this year for our stroke and STEMI services in the community. So throughout the pandemic and everything, we were still able to get all, uh, our patients in the facilities as quickly as possible.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I am glad to see this report because I know that you, um, actually replaced a very capable, uh, billing person. And this kind of shows that, uh, the person that you hired, uh, is continuing that good practice to, to get things out and get things where they need to be.
Uh, this is Commissioner Dunn. Uh, Nick, I think about once a year we, we, uh, review the ambulance service and do you see any changes in, um, uh, the costs of service that we need to, uh, make or anything like that?
We normally, uh, go to a meeting with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. There's normally a, a big billing conference for the state of Kansas through the, uh, Kansas EMS Association Billing Society. And at that point, uh, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, uh, give us a detailed report on, uh, where our revenue or where our, our, our bills are or our charges to, to where we're, we're making it. And they have a, a matrix they use that says you should set your fees so far above where you're, uh, and, and it ensures, ensures you're not leaving money on the table. Unfortunately, with COVID last year, that meeting didn't happen. So we're in the process now of trying to figure out how Blue Cross is gonna get us that information. And, and that's what we utilize to set our fees is to make sure that we're, we're not leaving money on the table with our private insurances. So as soon as I get that report from them, I'm sure there's gonna be conversations on at least whether we're goo- we're good where our, our fees are or if we've, uh, at a point where we need to increase them. I will tell you, it's been two years since we've increased any of our fees and we are still in the, uh, bottom level of, of the communities around us. So I think there's probably going to be an increase in the future, but at this point in time, until I get the, uh, paperwork from Blue Cross, uh, I, I'm, I'm not able to really give information on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Nick? No, an affirmative motion would be to, uh, approve the EMS adjustments and collections for 2020.
This is Don. Motion approved.
Mr. Dunn, second.
Commissioner Dunn, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Chair Waymire?
Yes. All right, thank you. Yeah, and we are on the staff reports. Derek?
All right, thanks, Cole. Um, just a handful of things I'll try and move through quickly cause I think we've got, uh, uh, quite the list on staff reports today. Um, I spoke with each of you last week about the retreat. Um, Janet is in the process of trying to get that scheduled for us. Um, we are actually having a little bit more trouble this year, um, securing the location. And I will tell you, we are shooting for that first week of March. So, um, each of you indicated that, that doing it on back-to-back days would be okay. Um, so we're, I think we were initially trying to, to secure the first and the second, which is a Monday and Tuesday. I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to do that, so we may start looking at the fourth and fifth, which would be a Thursday and Friday. And so we will keep, um, working to do that. I mean, we should be able to find a location and, and temporary, temporarily hold it to make sure that it's gonna work for all five of you. But just wanted you to know that that's generally the timeframe we're looking at, uh, before I move on. Do you have any questions about that? Okay, um, Colt and I have a meeting this morning at 10:30. Um, it is with the city and FCDC. Uh, as all of you know, the park out there is, is pretty well completed. We have hired a marketing firm to help us market the park. And Paul's done a fantastic job promoting proximity parks since he's been here. Um, we're really getting to the point where we're just kind of waiting for the world to turn back on, so to speak, um, for industry to start booming again and, and I think we'll be in a, a really good position out there. So the purpose of the meeting, and I think it's gonna be a recurring meeting, is to just try and make sure that, that the decision makers are all on the same page. I mean, at the end of the day, this is a city-county partnership and it's going to be both, uh, commissions that are responsible for making some of these decisions. And so, um, kudos to Paul. I just, I, I think he wants to make sure that there is, uh, an active dialogue going on between both bodies. And so, uh, we're gonna have that meeting today at 10:30. Um, it's obviously, it's February already. Um, Janet and I historically start talking about the budget a little bit this month and certainly next month, um, we start putting things together. Something I want the five of you, uh, to start thinking about and happy to have a discussion today, but it, it might be better to just start thinking about it. Um, and that's community partners. Um, as you know, that's something we normally do at the beginning of the budget process. Last year, we did not have them come in. Um, and some of that was obviously due to the pandemic. We didn't know, um, where we were gonna be at financially. And I think a lot of factors went into that, but I think we have another decision to make on that this year. Like I, I will tell you, and, and this will come as no surprise to, to any of you, but I, I think Janet and I are gonna once again recommend a largely flat budget and, and certainly the, the portion of the budget that, that we allocate to community partners. Um, I think we will recommend that it stay largely flat. Um, because we are still in the mid, the midst of this pandemic. And while we fared well so far, um, we are starting to see that we do have expenses that, uh, are associated with, just with responding to the pandemic. And those expenses don't appear to, to be going away anytime soon. And in fact, um, we may have to start looking at some additional staffing solutions if, if, uh, if, if, uh, our response continues to ramp up the way that it's appearing that it's going to. And so I think we still have plenty of ongoing pandemic-related expenses. It is unclear whether or not there will be any more funds available to local governments. And so certainly I think we should take a kind of a cautious approach with the 2022 budget as well. And so you might just start thinking about, do we want to, you know, bring a group of people back into the chambers and, and meet in person? Or do we, you know, do we want to make the decision to, uh, keep it flat again for, for 2022? We can talk about that a little bit at the retreat as well if you wish, but it's just something that, that I want you to have on your minds. Before I transition into COVID, do any of you have any thoughts on that?
This is Commissioner Dickinson. We might just kind of get a feel for what maybe additional expenses. So a lot of our community partners, like the Fair Board, didn't have a lot of, but I know like Elizabeth Layton Center, their revenue was way down last year due to COVID. Anyway, maybe at least look at what they have to present if they, if they feel like they had a huge difference because of that.
I appreciate those comments, Ian, and, and certainly we can do that and, and we will have a dialogue with them. I will tell you that as part of the CARES Act process, we gave all of our community partners the opportunity to apply for funds and, and kind of to address exactly what you just spoke to. We assume that the pandemic had taken a toll on them, and so we gave them that opportunity. And, and certainly some of them responded and we were able to help some of them. We were able to help, you know, area agency on aging. We were able to help Prairie Paws. We were able to help a couple of others. But generally, we did not get like, you know, I think going into it, Janet and I kind of thought that we would have them all immediately applying and that we would have difficulties allocating, um, fairly allocating the money. And that was not our experience at all. Um, if anything, we had to work hard to drum up interest. And so, um, that is also kind of contributing to my belief that, you know, it, it, they must have gotten their own funding from other sources or something. So we'll have that discussion. But I, you know, we've given them the opportunity for extra funding in the last year and, and, you know, not many of them took that opportunity. But in any event, you might just start thinking about that and, and we'll continue to have the discussion each week as we get closer to that time. In terms of COVID, um, first I want to talk about, so we have been having vaccine clinics primarily in two locations. We've been doing them, um, at the Ottawa Middle School Gymnasium. And I, I can't say it enough, absolutely appreciate Dr. Cobb's, the superintendent of 290, for giving us that opportunity. That has worked incredibly well. Um, and it's a great venue for Saturdays. There, there are more issues obviously with trying to do it during the week, just given that you have kids in there and, and you have PE classes and Dr. Cobb's, um, is willing to try and work with us to make that work. But we don't obviously want to be an imposition either. And so we, we've been looking at other locations. We've used the commission chambers and that works, but it also limits our capacity. We just, we can only bring so many people in there, uh, one time. And so what we are doing this week is we have actually set up at the Bottle House. And, um, that, uh, they made, or they let us know that, that that space would be available. So we're currently set up there testing it out to see, does this work? Early returns on that are very positive. We think it's a good location. It has good parking. Plenty of space in there, but I want to talk to the five of you and see, would you have any issue if we kind of made a longer-term arrangement with them, um, to just set up shop there? I will tell you, we have tried to ask them, um, if there is a cost associated with it. And, and, and we've made it clear, like, we're not in a position to pay a lot of money to use that space. I mean, there are other spaces that we could use for free. And so we've already allocated all of our CARES Act funding. Like there's no pot of money that I can pay them a large sum out of. Having said that, I don't expect them to lose money on this. I think we could help them with increased utilities and, and certainly could pay something. But if, if we could strike a reasonable deal, do any of the five of you have any issues with, uh, setting up shop there and, and doing our weekly clinics there?
As Don, I'd add, no problem.
As Roy, no problem.
Are they using that space at all in, on the weekend? Are you talking about just during the week or also the weekend?
So I think we would primarily be using that space Monday through Thursday. I, I don't think that we've ruled out using it on some weekends, but obviously that Friday, Saturday, Sunday would be their busier times. So we're primarily focused on Monday through Thursday.
I would have no problem if you could, you know, get a clear agreement and, and price worked out.
Okay.
Just Rodney, no problems.
Okay. Well, we'll, uh, it's my intention to call the ownership group over there here, either later this morning or early this afternoon. So we'll see if we can, um, get a clear agreement and get it reduced to writing. And if so, then we'll, and we'll plan on proceeding. I mean, just for perspective, I, I mean, I, we don't have thousands of dollars to throw at this. So any agreement that I strike is going to be something that is well within my spending allowance. So I shouldn't be any issues there. I've said this several times, but, and certainly, certainly know that Nick would agree with me on this. Alan Radcliffe would agree on this. And the superintendents, um, managing through COVID is just an ongoing nightmare. It's things change so quickly. Guidance changes so quickly. I feel like all we, all we have been doing for months is, is plotting a course, getting set up to, to, I, I guess, follow that and then changing course because guidance changes. And it's just put a lot of demands on my staff. So one of the things that I have started doing, um, is I've actually pulled Casey. She has been historically throughout this, just doing our communications. But I've actually pulled her in and she's managing portions of this now. Including she is tracking our vaccines. She is working with Chelsea there in the health department to track exactly where we are at in terms of what we have on hand, what we've administered, where we're at in terms of age on our over 65 crowd. So I am going to ask, or I'm cold, I'm going to ask that we turn this over to her and let her talk about vaccines and then we can transition to Nick. So Casey, if you want to jump in.
Good morning, commissioners. So, um, the health department is still working on the over 75 population. And last week, we administered 160 doses of the vaccine. 150 of those were first doses and then 10 of the, for like the over 75 population. And then 10 of those, of course, were second doses from the original phase one individuals who received their vaccine. We didn't have a Saturday clinic last week as we're trying to remain cognizant of our manpower, although we're sprinting to try to administer as many vaccines as, as soon as we can. It's also going to be a marathon. So we gotta keep that in mind. This week, we have given 30 second doses, um, or we will by the end of the week, give 30 second doses to phase one individuals. And then yesterday we gave 50 doses to first, um, dose individuals. And we'll give another 50 doses today, Thursday and Friday. So a total of 200 first doses this week. I do get several questions and so does the health department about where we're at on age. And as of this morning, they're making appointments for Thursday and Friday this week. And we're on, um, 1943, late 1943. So that's like 77-year-olds. We do try to keep spouses on the same schedule, um, as, um, their spouse. So get them their shots at the same time unless their age difference is like vastly different. So there are some people that have received the vaccine that are of course under the age of 77, but that's because their spouse was older than that. And hopefully by the end of this week, we will be done with 76-year-olds, um, based on our appointment scheduling. So we do find that the longest process in getting people vaccinated is actually the phone call that it takes to make the appointments. And it can take almost, you know, 10 to 15 minutes per person. So that is, I know the health department has all hands on deck, um, when it comes to getting those appointments made for the week. And next week, um, there are going to be a lot of vaccines administered. We do have 320 second doses, um, next week that will be part of those first phase one individuals. And then our Saturday clinic, um, our very first Saturday clinic is ready for their second doses on Saturday. And then we have another large amount of first doses that Nick plans to administer on Saturday as well. I think you mentioned at least a total of 500 doses that day. So we have a lot of doses coming in and a lot of doses going out. Several second doses are up. Um, so that is keeping the, our vaccinators very busy. I do know that we received 300 second doses from the state of Kansas yesterday and another 400 new first doses from the state of Kansas yesterday. So, um, does anybody have any questions on where we're at? I know that was a lot in a short amount of time.
You know, that answered a lot of questions for me, Casey, that I'd been getting. So I appreciate all that.
I do also want to point out, because I get this question a lot, like people are just anxious to know when they're going to be able to get the vaccine. So, um, as of right now, we have about 250 more people over the age of 75 on the list. And it is important to know, I feel like that list continues to grow every day because more people hear about it and they call in. And if you are over the age of 75 or wherever your birthday falls, you go immediately to the top and you're the first appointment the next time they call. So, and we also, um, I just looked this morning, there's about 650 people between the ages of 70 to 74. So that's where we're at.
Glad we're making progress there. Any other questions for Casey? Let's move on to Nick then.
Good report, Casey. Thank you for all that information. Um, I, I will kind of go continue kind of what Casey said. As you guys know, we're in phase two. And one of the hard parts about phase two is they lumped a lot of people in phase two without a lot of guidance. So it, it leaves the county and, and the COVID response team really to, uh, establish the priorities. And that's been honestly, uh, uh, an endeavor in itself. So, so as Casey said, we're, we're going for the 65 and over and planning for what's going to look like after that. And it, uh, it seems that we're, we're doing a good job getting that. And as we said, we got 400 doses from the state. We were looking at getting between 200 and 300, and now we got 400. So that's positive. Also yesterday, the Health Partnership Clinic that is in Johnson County, Miami County and Franklin County, told us that we could have in the ballpark of about 350 more doses from them. And that'll be a primary and secondary dose, but those are because Johnson County has switched over to the Pfizer vaccine. So due to the fact with our relationship with them, it looks like we're going to get a few more extra doses at that time. So with what we're looking at and, and the, and the space at the Bottle House, if we're able to work a deal, we're, we're trying to get up to the point where we can give 450 or so shots a day. What we have to remember with that is that's going to, in 28 days, become primary and secondary. So we may only give 240 doses a day at this time, but in 28 days, we might be up to 480. So I, uh, I, I want to take that in the perspective as we're rolling through with this. The other thing that we're going to utilize our Saturday clinics for, if, if we remember, we did 200, um, almost 28 days ago. My goal is to try to push out 500 in a day and, and see what that looks like because that will lay the foundation and the groundwork for us on our daily clinics to see what we need for staffing. And we've found out throughout this that we can utilize my paramedics also to administer these vaccines. So that gives us another pool of people to pull from to put them in. So, um, I, I'm excited about where we're going with vaccines and I'm excited to see we're actually getting some. And if we can continue this pace, I think we're going to start making, making progress and getting through the, the phases and, and doing what we need to do by getting our people vaccinated. So that's really where I'm at with the vaccines. One thing that we continue to get phone calls on are, are homebound individuals over the age of 65. And where, where that's a tough, uh, road to travel down is by the time you, you arrive, you give the vaccine, you wait the 15 to 20 minutes for a reaction. In the same amount of time, we can do 20 homebound, we could do essentially 200 people that can get to the clinic. So as we roll through this, we're working on plans to get our homebound individuals taken care of. But we also have to get a large volume of, of doses out. So it's something we're working through, um, it's something we're planning and it might be on our Fridays when we really don't have anything planned when we start working on those. But, but we're rolling through that. So if you have any questions from individuals that are homebound, there is process in place to do it. We just got to make sure it's going to work and not slow down the, uh, large administrative of the people that can arrive at the location. So, um, with, with COVID testing, um, Pomona has tested a total of 402. There's still a lot of talk that that location is going to be taken down pretty quick. A lot of that, if they don't have trailer locations, they don't have anything to get the people out of the, the elements out there except for a vehicle to sit in. So if we're looking at the weather getting colder, I anticipate those, both of the facilities, I knew I was showing Pomona is going to be shut down throughout some of that because of the elements. With that, the health department has started testing anybody that calls. And, and with that, we've seen an increase in the number of tests we're doing. But at Neosho right now, there's 10 pending. They've tested 726. Pomona, as I said, was 402 and there's eight pending. So, and their pending is about two to three days. So you can see they're not doing a large volume in those locations. For our total numbers right now, it looks like we have 2,257 total positives since we started dealing with COVID. One of the things, there was a, there was a slight spike in, in the numbers because we had one of our Gardner locations finally release information to the state. And, and that drove now- And and that drove numbers up in our Wellsville area and that. And a lot of those were past positives that never got reported to the state. So I anticipate, I know the state's working with the other location up there to get those numbers released. We'll probably see another spike of old numbers here pretty quick. So testing's going good. We're we're still seeing people wanting to get tested. But with the changes in the the laws, one of the other things we're seeing is people going to work sick more often. I actually had an individual call me that needed tested and I asked where they were at and they were at work. And when I asked why, they said because their employers aren't able, aren't paying them to be off and they're going to work sicker. And that that makes me nervous because I don't want to see more outbreaks. And right now, we're we're doing really good on a lot of our locations and our outbreaks and our facilities. I on my call on Tuesday, with the nursing homes, right now, we don't have any positive residents in nursing facilities. Two of our nursing facilities got their secondary vaccinations and they're starting to look at some sort of a reopening plan. And the other nursing facilities are slated within the next couple of weeks to to have their residents fully vaccinated. So that's that's a positive as well. We do have two employees that are positive in some of our nursing facilities, but that's still a small number. And honestly, with them tested twice a week is contained and I don't see anything to be nervous about. So that that's a positive for our senior living areas and and that population. Other things that we are seeing on the vaccine is our locations that are not able to administer the vaccine besides the health department. I see there's gonna be a few difficulties with with a few of them, just because they're they're more of a larger corporate owned and they're gonna be getting a lot of their doses from the federal government. I'm trying to get with meetings with some of them to see if we can try to maintain ourselves on the same page and get these doses out quickly and take care of our population. But that's one of the things working through. I do have some stuff to talk about with dispatch in this report, but I'll open it up. Is there any questions on anything that I've told you on the COVID response?
Commissioner Dunn, one question I got is, is the second dose exactly the same as the first dose? I mean, the vaccine, the vaccine is exactly the same as the first dose?
That is correct. The vaccine is the same, the same, the same dose and everything as the first dose.
Okay, thank you.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I have a couple of things. The first one is since we're using the bottle house now, if somebody got their first dose at the commission chambers, will they be getting it at the chambers or at the bottle house?
Our staff will be reaching out and scheduling that as we rotate through and start moving over to the bottle house. I anticipate that a lot of them will be at the bottle house now. But with scheduling conflicts and stuff, the health department staff will reach out and make sure that people know where to go.
And my second question is, do you have any idea where the court, the employees and judges in the courthouse fall in your vaccination rotation anticipation?
We received some stuff from the state of Kansas on the judges and that staff. Again, they're placed in phase two. And we I have actually reached out to somebody over at the building to ask them the number of people that they thought that would need them when we get to that point.
Hey, Nick, this is Casey. I just want to clarify, I want you to clarify, because I get this question a lot too, or we're going to, because of the bottle house announcement. Those that receive their vaccine at the middle school are still going to receive their vaccine at the middle school, correct?
That is correct. We will still utilize the middle school for Saturdays. That location is is great for what we've got. And with the amount of places we're gonna need to set up, that the Saturday clinics, as long as we can, will be at the middle school.
Nick, this is Derek and I want to chime in on Ian's other comment about court staff. And correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that they are kind of part of that group that is encompassed in that congregate settings portion of phase two, which kind of puts them on the same plane as teachers. And so that's something that's gonna be challenging for us because what we are finding is, I think, more and more people appear to be believing in in receiving this vaccine, which is a fantastic thing. But it's just emotions are starting to get a little high because people are anxious to get it. We we've been locked down for a year. People want to get back to normal. And so that's something that that we're gonna have to have a lot of discussions about internally. And I can't tell you that it won't make it to your level, you being the commissioners, just FYI, just in terms of how to potentially prioritize those groups that that are all within phase two. And so again, just something to to potentially think about. Thank you.
Is there any other questions on that before I jump into the dispatch side? Dispatch side is just something I kind of want to get out on the horizon a little bit. As I've talked about, we we've got a great working relationship with the nine-one-one council. I'm actually on the board for the nine-one-one council. And and truly, they're they're doing good things with nine-one-one services in the state. One of the things they they worked on is a partnership for a a CAD system, which is a way to tracking your resources and dispatching resources that made it statewide. And and with that, they've asked us to partner with them to demo how one entity could essentially dispatch for another one. So us in Rice County are in this and we're working on a on a plan that one day we're going to dispatch their unit on a on a mock call, like their dispatch center goes down and we take over for them. And in the same return, they're gonna dispatch for us as if ours went down through this CAD system and and see what it looks like. With that, it strikes a lot of conversations of where we're at in the dispatch center. And we we currently use Tyler, it's in public safety and as our CAD system. We host that system on a server and house. And we're we're reaching the end of life on that. And so one of the things we're working on real hard and I've been on multiple calls with Sarah and the state and the CAD vendor that they're using. Because essentially, if this works out, it could be a lifesaver to save us a lot of money and move into. So we got a lot of involvement in it. Two of my dispatchers are working on the state system and what the template looks like for that. So for the next three months, we're gonna be sampling this system as well as working on what it looked like to be able to dispatch throughout the state from one location. So I'll probably be bringing you reports on that just to let you know how it's going and what that could look like if it will integrate with some of our other systems to help us come up with a CAD system that as our other one starts to get to its end of life without having to upgrade things. So it's exciting opportunity for us and and really could bring it, bring some new opportunities to Franklin County. So that's one thing we're working with. Right now, I say this just because we're at the, we're we're just at the beginning stages. And it may not work out, but it is an opportunity that we have. We are full staffed at dispatch. I do have one person retiring. We were able to to get a good hire. We switched our hiring process to a computerized system that actually runs candidates through simulated scenarios that test their ability to multitask. And it seems like that program was was very good to help us look at individuals that could meet the demands and was able to hire somebody that I'm pretty excited to get on board. So that's what I got for dispatch. Thank you.
Nick?
Yes.
I know you're Casey could answer this question. You said you were down to the age of working on seventy-six now?
Yeah, that's correct, Don. They're scheduling in nineteen forty-three, which is like seventy-seven year olds. But hopefully, we'll be done with seventy-six year olds by the end of the week.
And then, do you know approximately how many people you have to get down to seventy?
Yes, like six hundred and fifty between the ages of, there's six hundred and fifty between the ages of seventy-four and seventy. And we have about two hundred and fifty to get down through seventy-five.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nick, are you still on?
Yes, I am.
This is Commissioner Dickinson. I have a question about the health department and I know we have not had any Board of Health meetings this last year. And we had to change our leadership over there. I know that they had talked about getting starting a process to get accredited. Is that still moving forward or is that something that kind of got pushed aside because of everything else?
We still have the wheel spinning on that. We've applied for extensions to to get that extended out. Right now, we just got extended another three months on that. The thing with the accreditation process with that is it's a lot of paperwork. It's 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 one of those things where you spend a ton of time doing, putting, basically writing things down for them and showing documents and putting a ton of paperwork together. So it's something that if we work through this, we need all hands on deck making phone calls and getting getting the vaccine out. So we've asked for extensions and received it. But we're still hammering away on it, but it's not as fast a process due to the need for getting the vaccines out.
And this is Derek. I want to jump in there as well. Agree entirely with everything Nick just said. Having said that, there may be some difficult decisions in the future about continuing to pursue accreditation. I, we are not gonna stop this vaccine push anytime soon. I mean, I think we all look at twenty twenty-one as, I mean, we we just, we believe this is what we're gonna be doing this year. And and who knows what twenty twenty-two brings. And I am interested in pursuing a much longer extension on that accreditation. But if we can't get that, then then I think we'll need to talk to the five of you about whether or not it's it's something we want to continue to pursue because we need all hands on deck. I've pulled people from other departments into this response and in doing so, have put stress on those departments. And and some of that, part of the reason why we've had to do that is because we still do have some effort being put forth towards accreditation. And Nick is exactly right. We're getting to the point where we need all hands entirely focused on COVID nineteen and our vaccination efforts. So it may be something where we have to talk to you. Do you want to try and hire temporary staff and incur the cost of doing so just so that we can continue an accreditation push? Or do we decide to just go in a different direction? So I feel like I've given you a lot to think about today, but that that's another thing I want the five of you to start mulling around because we're getting to the point where we just, we absolutely have to have all of our people making these calls. So, thank you.
This is Commissioner Dickinson and I would agree. And I think the timing was just probably the wrong, the wrong thing that it's probably not a priority at this point. I do want to remind everybody that I have volunteered to make phone calls. So if you need a phone caller and something I can do, I would be glad to do that.
Yeah, thank you for that, Ian. And sincerely, I think we're gonna be able to indulge you on that. So I appreciate you being willing to do so.
All right, let's move down the list. I see Larry Walrod.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Sure, Ken. Go ahead, Larry.
I suspect that most of you have seen the publication that came out in the Ottawa Herald on January the 12th. This notice provided the start of the appeals period for the proposed update of the Franklin County floodplain maps. This process has been in the works for over two years. And by the regulations set up by the federal government, they had to give a ninety-day publication providing the notice that you have that timeframe and that will be the last timeframe to file an appeal for the amendments that are included now in the revised map. I did want to indicate that those appeals need to be submitted to our office. I've had several phone calls. I assume that maybe some of you have had inquiries on this. But the appeals period runs through April the nineteenth. And after that, the only process of minting the map will be provided through the letter of amendment process to FEMA. So it is kind of important that if you're not pleased with the current maps or the proposed maps, I should say, then you do have the opportunity right now to file an appeal. That appeal has to be following the criteria that the feds have set up for the federal insurance program, mapping program. But those need to come through our office because we need to submit a comment with those. One of the big issues have been that there have been very little changes, but most of them are either taking a little bit of land out or adding a little bit to the existing maps that were done previously in in two thousand and eleven. Those maps, of course, were based on the USGS database and they are presently using a much more accurate form of data. This is a digital data through the radar system. And we're going to see some minor changes, but I, we haven't been able to detect anything that's real significance that would have major impacts on a lot of surrounding processes. So I did want to bring this to your attention, that the appeals period has started. And if people do have concerns and so on, they should call this office.
All right, thank you, Larry. Any questions for Larry? I'll rip it out to Ken.
Good morning. Just update real quick. First, I want to say thank you guys very, very much. As you know, our old camera system was on its last leg and we were able to update our system and it is increasingly better. It helps cover some areas that were not covered on the previous one. So say, safety is, has increased quite a bit there. So again, thank you very much. Right now, we are at one juvenile at this time. We had another one that went to the correctional facility last week. So we're down to just the one at this time. We're also currently down three, three different staff members, but we have some interviews next week. So hopefully, we'll get some of those positions filled. The Department of Corrections has rolled out a couple new things for us. So we are working on those and getting, starting our training on on some of that. They have the the new Maisy two web-based system, which is a behavioral health screening that we use here with intake and juvenile detention. They rolled that out last week, so we're, we're good on that now. Training has been completed and we know how to use all that. So soon, they're also So soon, they're also going to be rolling out our new intake system. They're looking at hopefully this month. We'll see. It's something that's been needing to change for for years, and they've been working on it for quite some time. So hopefully that'll come out soon, and we'll get staff trained on that as well. And then the other thing that we are working on right now is overcoming obstacles. It's a new program. It's a program used in school districts to teach kids different life skills and things like that. Working with Community Corrections to implement this program so we can use it for the kids or the juveniles here as well as juveniles that are on probation. So it's a we do that anyway here with life skills, teaching life skills, but this is a research base, has a research-based curriculum. Teaches more than thirty different social and emotional skills and things like that to help them achieve goals, resolve conflicts and solve different problems. And I think it's going to be a good thing for the kids here, something that will have, like I said, the curriculum to be able to use instead of just us, you know, teaching life skills that we've been doing here for for years. So it'd be a nice change. That's all I have at this time.
All right, we appreciate the update. Anybody have a question for Ken? Okay, we're going to keep moving down the list. Sheriff Richard.
Good morning. I have a few things this morning. Our inmate count at the jail is looking a lot better. We do still have, I believe, nine inmates that are farmed out. With that said, throughout the pandemic, there have been times when the court has issued orders that kind of change and limit the time that people will spend in jail and then whether or not we will extradite and bring people into our jail. Those the last set of those orders recently expired, so we're pretty much back to like business as usual. So we will see what happens with our numbers, but we do still have our processes in place, our protocols, so that we are doing the quarantine of inmates before when they come in. So they're they're separated from general population throughout that quarantine time. And then we before we move them to a more of a permanent location there. So I just wanted you guys to know that. I don't know what is, again, what's going to happen to our numbers since those orders have expired. But if there if it becomes a concern, Judge Wine has been has been very willing to listen to our concerns and has helped us in addressing those. So we appreciate that relationship as well. We've the last couple of days, we've had the company here at the jail kind of looking at our camera system. We've had had a couple of problems with with some with a with a server and some cameras. So we've been addressing that. So if you see work trucks down there last couple of days, that's what that is about. And we're we believe we're getting everything on back online there. And we'll hopefully hopefully this is addressing that that issue there, getting that done. The next thing I have is that the and I don't know if anyone else was going to mention it, but we do have the tax cell on March ninth. And we have had a couple of properties that have already that have dropped off of that list through that things have been paid. And so that is good news that that has happened. But that again, that is still scheduled for March ninth at ten AM. And then the last thing I have is something that is exciting for for me. And that is that as the commission knows, one of our things that we've really been trying to work on is the professional development for our staff and to help help people develop, you know, their their careers and give them give them that good career track here at Franklin County. And one of the areas that we thought needed to be addressed was in in our jail as far as one of our positions. We in the jail, we the rank structure has has been that we you go from corrections officer to corporal, and then there is no sergeant position. And the there's a lieutenant that runs that is the jail administ the jail commander. And so that has created kind of like a stop, a blockage for the people that are want to maintain their career track in corrections. And so I've worked with with the county administrator and HR on a way that we can reclassify one of our corporal positions to be to be a sergeant position that will allow for that career progression through the corrections track. And this will be we're looking to do this in a way to kind of develop all of our jail staff more professionally and address some address some concerns that we have, some some things that have to be done that right now are being done as additional duty that that this position would serve essentially as the assistant jail commander and be able to get those things done on a regular basis. From looking at this from a budgetary standpoint, we are not looking to add any additional positions, and we're not creating a new position. We already have sergeants at the sheriff's office. But this will reclassify one of our corporals to be a to be a sergeant position. Right now, corporals work on shift, and so they are scheduled for two thousand one hundred eighty-four hours a year. And our proposal on this sergeant position will be that it will be a Monday through Friday position, so it'll go down to two thousand eighty hours. So even though it is a little bit higher, it is a higher pay grade with the hour change, it was this is going to have very little to no impact on our budget. Initially, it could be even a little bit of cost savings on our budget, depending on how much overtime there is. And in future, as that person moves up, it will it has very little impact. And so but we do believe that even though there's not a lot of impact on the budget, we believe that there will be as far as our operations and just morale and for intents and purposes, we believe that this is going to be a good move. That's something that we are that we are going to be looking to do here in the near future. I just wanted to let the board know that that's something that that we have going on. And and I appreciate theory and Derek with me on that. And it's been a it's been a long process, but I think it's been thoroughly vetted. And I think I think it's I think we're all going to be be pleased with it. So with that, if anyone has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those.
Hey, Jeff, this is Derek. Before we take questions, I just want to say just a couple of quick things. I want the board to know that that the sheriff has been incredibly patient with me on this. This is something he's wanted to do for some time, and it's a proposal he had in front of me months ago. And with COVID, I've just not had the opportunity to to sit down with him and entertain it, but we finally got that opportunity. And so, Jeff, I thank you for being patient with me. And you you've had a great attitude the entire time with it. So thanks for that. You you said these things. I want to reiterate them. We are not adding a position, and we're not adding a leadership position. We're taking an existing corporal and turning them into a sergeant. And so it's not adding another chief at the expense of the Indians. It's just a reallocation. And as Jeff said, this is largely budget neutral. I expect it to create an immediate decrease in the budget. But the reason why we are saying it could ultimately add a little bit is the ceiling on a sergeant position is higher than the ceiling on a corporal position. And so if somebody stays in that role long enough to reach the ceiling, then eventually it could lead to a bit of an increase in the budget, but it's not anything we really anticipate anytime soon. And so Jeff explained this well. It it makes a lot of sense. And so, yeah, with that, certainly either of us could answer any questions that you have about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
I think it's pretty straightforward and well explained what you're doing there. I don't hear any questions. Thank you for the update, Sheriff.
Thank you, Chairman.
David Lee, Public Works Director.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. This last week, our Road and Bridge Division has been exceptionally shorthanded. So most of our efforts have been focused on hauling rock to some of our trouble spots around the county, getting those shored up. Some of the roads that are more heavily impacted by the snow and rain that we've received lately. So that's been our primary objective. We did, however, we were able to patch some some concrete spots on a couple of bridges and a place on the Eisenhower and Labette Road, a concrete approach there off of Labette onto Eisenhower. So we did do a little bit of that. The cold temps and the chances of snow next week will play a big role in in how we handle the next couple of weeks. You know, with the snow, that obviously impacts our crews. And then the cold temps also have a negative effect also. A couple of other things. I participated in a walkthrough with KDOT officials, the city of Ottawa and the contractor on the new Montana road bridge over I thirty-five. We did that yesterday afternoon. We collectively approved opening the bridge while the contractor finishes some last minute punch item lists, punch items. They have just a few things to to wrap up, including regrading a couple of areas, installing some rideaway fence and just general site cleanup, among a few other things. None of these things should adversely affect traffic flow. So we if it if it's not if it doesn't happen today, it's for sure going to happen tomorrow where they open up the the road to traffic. So that's that's good news to for that part of the county. I also yesterday received the SES landfill expansion evaluation report. I've reviewed that and asked for a little bit more information. So as soon as I have that, we'll get a date scheduled for SES to come and present that report to you all so that we can then begin talking about next steps. And finally, I just want to give a heads up that Union Pacific, we found out yesterday kind of through the the grapevine that Union Pacific was going to be doing some work on the railroad tracks right there in Lane. They're going to be they've got some sort of maintenance project that's going to be scheduled here in the next couple of weeks. And they're going to have to close that, at least while they're working on it. They will close that 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 crossing while they're working. So as soon as we have more information on that and a firm schedule, we will work with Casey to make sure that we advertise that to the public on social media. And we've already begun kind of reaching out to the school districts and those so those folks so that they they can begin planning for that eventuality here in the next couple of weeks. And of course, that that work is all weather dependent also, so we'll see when that happens. So that's all I have for right now.
Do we have any questions? Thank you, David. Janet?
I don't have anything, Commissioners.
All right, let's go to Commissioners' comments, Board reports. Roy?
I just got a positive comment from one of constituents who went through the vaccine clinic and really appreciated what the county is doing, Health Department, everybody that's helping out the Health Department. So that was a good compliment. Haven't been anywhere else other than that.
All right, thank you. Roy, Don?
I wanted to ask Janet a question. I'm sorry, I didn't get it in quick enough.
Sure, go ahead.
There's a constitutional amendment on August twenty to twenty twenty-two primary ballot. County elected officials will should make preparations for the twenty twenty-two budget process to handle necessary expenses. I think I know what this is, but can you tell me? The new constitutional amendment.
Well, I'm not sure which one you're talking about. We've been talking about possibly having two, so.
It didn't have to do with abortions?
One of them does, yes.
Okay, this is probably what they're talking about.
Yeah, probably. I think that's the one that has the most traction right now. So we've kind of been talking about on our statewide conference call about possibly having two. So but they are talking about one of them.
Probably no, but what's the other one?
I I don't know off the top of my head. I it's it's in the future, and they haven't approved it yet. So I haven't taken too much effort to read it and become familiar with it because we.
Didn't know if it had anything to do with that Senate Bill thirteen or not.
No, that's not a constitutional amendment yet that I know of. So they still are working on that, and it was supposed to have a hearing yesterday in the House Committee, but it was postponed until next week.
All right, thank you, Janet.
You're welcome.
Yeah, back to me for a report. See, Wellsville, the main thing Wellsville's got going right now is a new expansion on the thirty-three highway there and and removing that bridge, the old railroad bridge there at thirty-three right there on the edge of on the east edge of Wellsville. And they're working on a lot of easements. And I don't know what they they had a quite a executive sanction, a couple of them. They're purchasing land. I don't know for sure what what to purchase of the land is. I don't know if it has to do with the expansion or not, so I'll let you know as soon as I find anything out. Main thing Rantoul's working on right now is a coach court with their partnership with a couple of other towns in Franklin County, taking quite a bit of time to get that all lined out. But but I know the municipal courts up here have been working real good with them. And the city of Richmond's kind of got theirs established pretty good, so they're working with them. One other thing, I've been working with Project Seventeen through the RC and D. And I've been, you know, Heather McPhee, Heather McPhee. Heather Morgan stepped down a year ago right at the end of our grant that we finished up. We had a ninety-nine thousand dollar grant for local food and farm assistance. And I've been working with Mr. Dick Horton, which is the president of Project Seventeen. And he just contacted me as we're speaking. And they're getting ready to reconfigure the Project Seventeen and their board and coordinator. And he had just got back with me this morning, and he said he's wanting to work with the Lake Region RC and D and CCAN, which encompasses almost the whole King County. And hopefully we can, there's been talk of working on the USDA REAP grant, which is a hundred thousand dollar grant for electrical and and energy upgrades and and evaluations to businesses. And we're working on that right now. So everything's email, nobody's face to face. So that's all I have.
All right, Rod?
Yeah, I have nothing to add, Cole.
All right, I am. I am.
Sorry, I was muted. This is Commissioner Dickinson. Friday I attended a webinar. It was the first of four on public health governance and finance, whatever commission needs to know, basically about our role as the Public Health Commission in our county. And a lot of it was just kind of a recap of what our responsibility is this time, anyway. On Sunday, I did I started and I finished it yesterday. The Franklin County Historical Society has their annual meeting. Unfortunately, it was by Zoom. And it's one of those things that I I'm missing regular updates from our partners this year because of not being able to get together. But they had a very good program on mapping the past presented by a gentleman named Kelly Kel. by a gentleman named Kelly, Kelly Johnston from Aurora, Missouri. And if you're interested in history at all, especially the history of Ottawa, it was a very good program, and it is still available online on the Old Depot Museum website. I, I, after it was over, I pulled up some maps from 1892, I believe, that actually showed my son's house, was in existence at that time, and it's kind of fun to be able to go back and see what was, what was there and what isn't there anymore. But if, if you're interested at all in, in history, it was a great program. On Monday, it was pretty busy. I had, we are, I'm on the commission, the Fourth Judicial District Nominating Commission for Judges, and we are in the process of appointing a new magistrate judge in Osage County, and this was just a preliminary meeting, so those posts will go out in all of the newspapers this week for any interested individuals in that position. A magistrate judge is the only judgeship that you do not have to have a law degree for, but this particular one, you do have to either live in Osage County or be willing to relocate to Osage County. So those will be going out, and they'll be, I think they have until the end of February or the very first part of March to get those in. And then we'll be having several meetings to go over those applications, and then have, hopefully, face-to-face interviews, but some kind of interviews with the applicants to be in, and then hopefully that position then will be the first part of April. I also had a food policy council meeting on Monday. Basically, they, they're just doing updates on current projects, the things that they are still working on. There's still a few food shortages throughout our county, so whatever we can do, or whatever any individual can do to help that out. The City of Ottawa had a study session. On Monday was fairly long. They are moving forward and refinancing some of their debt. They reviewed the FCDC funding agreement, and I know Paul wasn't on the, on the call today, but at this point, it looks like that they are moving forward with the amended funding agreement that he had asked us about last week. It's not official, it goes on the agenda for today, but they are looking at the amended one instead of the current one. They also looked at the funding agreement for Elizabeth Leighton Center. They also finally came to a consensus on their employee residency requirements that they have been working on for a while. They did their board and commission assignments. They just are just now getting those done. And then the City of Princeton on Monday evening had their meeting. There was a lot of mention on the things that they've been able to purchase from the CARES Act funding, and they were very appreciative of, of that. I think that if they didn't get any more, they would be happy with what they've already gotten, but they have been able to do a lot in their community with that. There is a new commercial project that, again, I'm not at liberty to say what it is, but it is moving forward, and there's a lot of excitement about it as it, when it becomes official, then I'll be able to share, or they'll make it official. And again, they are also working on getting their codes updated. I think they are basically looking at using, because the City of Richmond has theirs in a pretty good place, of just kind of using those instead of trying to update theirs all on their own. And that is, besides Go Chiefs, that is my report. Thank you.
All right, thanks Ian. I don't have much to add, other than, I think like what the other Commissioners said, somebody went out of their way to share how positive an experience they had at Vaccination Clinic, and they were really dreading the experience after what they'd seen on the news and heard happening in other communities. Not only was that not the issue, but like the opposite, they had a great experience, and remarked how well-run it was, had a lot of good, good things they had to say. They went out of their way to find me and tell me that, so I could share it with the right people. So kudos to you guys. And anything else, Derek, before we look to adjourn?
No sir.
All right. So we need a motion to adjourn. So move. Need a second.
Mr. Dan, second.
Thanks Roy. Hall in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you everybody.